We're going to call the meeting to order here just a little bit, but before we do, we're going to have the invocation and we're going to have the pledge. And the pledge will be given right after Gary Weber this evening. Knoxville just called and he's in Indianapolis, so he won't be able to be here, so we'll substitute for prayer. You all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go bow with me for the prayer, please. Our Father, we're so grateful tonight to be able to be here to represent the city as city council. Lord, we ask that you be with each one of us, that we reflect what's best for the whole city and not our own what's best or not just individuals. Lord, we ask that you be with this group and are here to watch us and here to talk to us. Lord, we're going to pass this budget tonight and we take this seriously and we ask that you guide us and direct us and give us faith. We ask that you bless this city over the next year and we give you the praise and the glory for all of it. Amen. May be seated.
Dear Lord, thank you for your time. Sorry. I want to continue.
Ask everybody to put their phones on vibrate for silence if they will, please. We'll have real call. First item of business.
Councilwoman Rish. Councilman Weber.
Here.
Councilman Shomol.
Present.
Councilman Nobby.
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilman Creach.
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens.
I have council people are here. That's a four. We have enough, we can do business. Therefore, I'll hold the meeting to order. I welcome all of you tonight to this meeting. It could be long and it could be short depending on how much talking we all do. If Fran was doing it, it would only last about forty minutes.
That's right.
Sometimes they tell me I should go home. We have the meeting in the minutes of the last meeting of September 2nd.
Make a motion to get passed as read.
Second.
Got a motion in a second that we accept the minutes as they were sent out to the council people. Are there any additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I was looking around to see if all of our people are here.
Karen.
Now.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four. Oh, I think we got everybody.
No, Karen's not here.
Well, Karen can't come. She's babysitting her grandchildren. She's going to come in now with the top. Okay. Under new business, I would ask that the four people that are here that retired just a couple of weeks ago would come up front, please. Well, some of them a couple of weeks, some of them a couple of months. It's our honor tonight to introduce to you, as you know, this group of people that retired from the utility. And let you keep track, Tom. Did you count where they're at? How many years?
Almost thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, are you in Manhattan?
She is.
I take my shoes off every night.
Thirty-six. Thirty-six. Forty. Forty.
A lot.
Hundred-and-seventeen.
Hundred-and-seventeen years of service by these people at the utility. Dave was mostly in water or they were in ways.
That's not enough. Hundred-and-forty-seven.
Right. Hundred-and-forty-seven.
I cheated you guys.
You think you have that. You got one in there? Utilities.
Was two weeks.
We'll call the fourteen in the park. You flush the toilets, timer too. You got big shoes is what I'm trying to fill to take and knew what they've done. And I hope they can all enjoy their retirement. I think they all jumped the gun because of Perf. Perf was, they were going to take part in the table.
I'm glad.
Mary Ellen. Mary Ellen, go. David, we thought you ought to have something to hang on the wall besides money to commemorate your longevity over there, so I think that'll look real pretty there in the wall. Thank you for your forty years of service to the Utility Department, City of Connersville. This year of our Lord 2014. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Jeff DuBois, thank you for your thirty-six years of service to the Utility Department, the City of Connersville. I really appreciate all of it. Mary Ellen, you're the only lady I've known of.
Thank you.
That's good.
I'll take lady, that's a good thing.
Mary Ellen Blanton, thank you for your thirty-five years of service to the Utility Department, City of Connersville. And I have to say, for seven years, I've worked with Mary Ellen and every lipstick I was calling her and saying, "Mary Ellen, am I really going to jail?" And she said, "No, I took care of it yesterday." She kept item satisfied.
Thank you.
And nobody will ever know what a job that is, except the people that's got it down there now. And Pat, you are very special. Since you not only worked at the utility for thirty-six years, but you had to work for your brother-in-law.
And my father.
And your father. I didn't know that.
My father was the supervisor. I couldn't hire him.
And then you worked for your father and then your brother-in-law and then David Nutty and put up with Mary Ellen.
Dave's my cousin. He was my cousin back then.
I want to tell you something, Jeff and Pat both, and Mary Ellen, as long as she could, trained our people at the sewage treatment plant just as much as they possibly could. It was all done in such a hurry, it was rough, but especially Jeff and Pat, Mary Ellen you too, but they worked hard the last month they were there to try to bring those people that are running the sewage treatment plant, at least so they could get it going. So, Pat, I'm proud to present you this award for thirty-six years of service to the Utility Department, City of Connersville. Would you like to get a picture of them or did you already do it?
I got it.
Okay. Would anybody like to speak? Council?
Oh, Tom, say something nice. Thank you.
Thanks for being the only woman.
Thanks for your many years of dedicated service.
Thanks, and I'm sorry.
Wish you well in your retirement. You just wait.
I'm jealous.
Fran, you always got a golden voice.
Oh, I appreciate all the work and I'm like truly hope they enjoy their retirement.
I got these boxes marked. I don't know if you want the box or not, but yeah. There you go.
Thank you.
You just want to trash your wagon.
Would you like to say something, Dr. Weber?
No, I think you've done a wonderful job. Thank you.
John Baker.
Thanks for your service, folks. I enjoyed working with them.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate all that you've done and Mary Ellen is still, John's drawing up a contract. In fact, she kind of consulted with us this week and she's helping the new people down there. Brad, would you like to say something? I think you two should say something. The new director and assistant director, Stan, if you'd like.
I just wanted to say, I've worked with all these guys for my whole twenty-nine years and I miss, will miss each one of them a lot. They were, you know, I learned a lot and me and Jeff painted everything in the sewage plant about five times. But especially Jeff and Pat when they left, that hit me very hard because we were all young when they hired in or when I got here, so thanks for your service. Although Karen Laura isn't here tonight, if you add her number to that, we're talking about almost two hundred years of service. Congratulations. We'll miss you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah, I'll be, thanks for your years of service. When I started, Jeff and Pat are still with utilities and I did appreciate their, they welcomed me, helped me, they helped those two new people. I just appreciate all the welcome you two to the department. I've known David and Mary Ellen for years.
You knew Recs too, didn't you?
Yes.
Don't hold that against me.
Would you two like to, or all of you like to give a fifteen minute speech?
Well, as a matter of fact, no.
I just appreciate everything the city's done for me and job was a great job, is a hard job to lead. Perf had a lot to do with it. I also have health issues and so I thought it was best to get out. I promised my family I wouldn't die down there like my father did, so it was time to get out.
Well, we hope you enjoy your retirement, Pat. You can travel or do whatever you want to. Mary Ellen, you already kind of told us what you're doing.
When Billy Immerman left the utilities and he went to his last border works meeting, he was greeted by all the employees came and they gave him a plaque and everybody said something nice and that was great. And then Dave at his last border works meeting, he gave a little speech and everybody said, "Good job, Dave, thanks a lot." My last border works meeting, as I walked out the door, everybody said, "See ya, short timer." I appreciate this chance to be recognized and being here.
That was probably my fault. When you guys retired, my daughter had just gone to college and my wife was suffering from, really suffering, and I took her up to Michigan for about ten days and we tried to adjust her to that and I was gone when you retired and I couldn't attend your parties, but we had all this in mind and I wanted to wait till everybody retired and do it all at once. And we do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you. Jeff? Well, when I hired in thirty-six years ago, I hadn't planned on staying that long, but I did. Thank you.
David?
I enjoyed the forty years I've been here. I think it's been a blessing to be able to work for Connersville and to provide a good product and good service to the community. I've enjoyed that and enjoyed working with all the people from years ago, the people that have gone on, to the new people now. It's just been a real blessing and I like what I do so much, I still do it in other communities, so I enjoy this.
Well, I apologize to all of you that I wasn't here for your party, but I apologize to all of you, it took me seven years to learn what you did, because when I came here there was a utility board, I didn't think I really had much responsibility. And then I, they kept coming asking questions, you know, and I don't know that other mayors have experienced the same thing. And then, of course, when we did the nasty thing of dissolving the utility board, then the board works took it over and I had to start learning real quick. And I know a little bit, but Mary Ellen says not much, but we do appreciate all that you've done and thank you. And if we can ever do anything to make your retirement better, Mary Ellen asked about a reference, I could make a reference for any of you without hesitation. So if you need it, be glad to. Thank you so much. Let's give it all a hand.
You've taken the water for the taste test this year, so I'll let you know how that turns out.
Good. Okay, we want to. Okay. Under new business, we also have the state bicentennial director, Anna Duncan. She's been assigned for this county, I believe. Anna, if you want to.
I had the opportunity to meet with several of the commissioners for the state bicentennial that is coming up in 2016 and I just wanted to let the community know some of the things that we can do to get involved and if they'd like to contact me or Melissa out of the city hall, they sure can do that. The four pillars are the bicentennial nature trust, the legacy project, the community involvement, and the historic celebration. One historic celebration was, is planned to celebrate our statehood here in Connersville because James Brownlee was a delegate in Oregon under that elm tree that helped frame the constitution for Indiana. And he is buried actually south of town and so several delegates will come and celebrate his life here. A lot of it was in Franklin County, but his death was here. Other things that are planned is that there'll be a torch relay that goes through every county and we will plan how that will come through our county and it'll go through all ninety-two counties and then end up at the state house. A lot of this is throughout the year, but the concentrated effort is for December 2016, which is the birth of our state two hundred years ago. If anybody is interested, they can definitely let me know if there's something in particular. I know some people are already working on the nature conservation and that is with the trails going all across the state. And also, we'd like to get everything onto the website, Indiana 2016, that will be happening that year. Definitely this four-H fair that we always have, just to let people know that we would be celebrating something extra that year. I think it's a good idea for all the delegates that are going to be coming through Indiana to see these special events. Anybody have any questions, they can get ahold of me or contact the mayor's office. Eight-two-seven-nine-nine-six-six.
Remember, we're three years older than the state.
That's right.
Why are they doing it so late in the year? Do you have any idea? By December?
It's the birthday on December 11th.
Oh, okay.
She had the answer?
It is pretty exciting. When I met with Lee Hamilton and the governor's wife, they were enamored with all the things that we were able to do for the bicentennial, so hats off to that committee and all the things that they did. They loved the red book that had all the history and then the green book with the final production. And I also gave them a gift of Harry Smith's book that had all the pictorials in there. But a lot of the things they want to also duplicate with the coins and other things. No money's asked though, so that's good.
Okay. Thank you so much. And if anyone has any interest, we need to carry, or straightforward.
Yes.
I told Anna the other day when we were talking about it, I said, "I'll be retired by then and I could be an observer, I'll enjoy it." Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we have then on the new business, resolution 2014-30, tax abatement for H and E cutter. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on that. It's in your pocket. I'm not going to read this resolution to you, it'll take rest in. Basically, he's buying a vertical machine cutter, has, it's capable of doing horizontal machining and the cost is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and he would like a tax abatement and I think it's a high here. Am I right?
Yes, he would actually buy him two pieces of equipment. The total cost is a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty thousand and it's a five-year abatement, which means it'll be phased in over a period of five years.
Is he adding employees there or do you?
Yes, he's adding four or five. I have the worksheet, but I don't have it here.
We don't have that.
Yes, he meets the criteria for a five-year.
Location.
Any discussion from the crowd during this abatement hearing? Anybody have anything at all? Not appearing, I will close the public hearing, throw it open to the council or passage if you would like that to be done.
I'll make the motion. Pass it.
Clear a second.
Second.
Got a motion in a second that we pass the final date of abatement for H and E machine. Any discussion? I'll let me have a motion on the floor. Any discussion of them? Being a resolution, we'll call for a real call vote.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomol?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Thank you, you pass that. An abatement is a phase and it's not where you don't pay any tax at all. And when you have a small company like that, I believe today is around forty-four, forty-five jobs up there, this will boost it to almost fifty. And when I look at this as part of the abatement committee, that means fifty people are able to live and work in this county, in this city, and make a living, buy a home, pay for a car and send their kids to school. It's not so much that adding the four is very important, but what's really important that we continue to watch that business grow here, which it has from two people on out. And as it grows, it helps our community and we've grown him. Now, this is the second or third abatement we've given him and he keeps growing slowly and, you know, anything that grows slowly, grows well. So, H and E Machine under Mr. Meller, they've really done a great job and I appreciate and I'm glad you gave him the abatement tonight. Resolution 2014-31, this is a reimbursement into the police department from telephone. That should be simple.
Oh, we pass resolution 2014-31.
Second.
Got a motion in a second and we pass resolution 2014-31, adding eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars back into the coffers into telephone. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now, this could be the big one. We're ready now for the proposed budget for 2015. This budget Julie Swedover for a long time and she's used up four erasers, six or seven pencils. And we've talked and we've talked and we're hoping that we can fund the budget the way we built it. There's no way of telling because it's a guessing game. You don't know how many people are going to pay the tax, not pay the tax. You don't know how many people are going to use gasoline, how many people are going to use this or that. So, we don't know exactly, but going by 2014 and looking at all the figures, it looks like we might be able to do that. So, that's the budget we have proposed to you. The finance committee, as we reviewed it, and Mr. Shomol, service president of the finance committee, your comments.
Well, it's great that we can say three and a half percent decrease. I mean, that's, that's going the right way in my opinion and we're down to four-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-one dollars from this year's budget of thirteen million, five-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-one-ninety-four dollars to the 2015 of thirteen million, one-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, three-hundred, one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-three-hundred-forty-three dollars. I think that's great news and I'm sure every city in the state would like to have that kind of a decrease in their budget. And I'm like you, I think if we all work together, I think we can, we can pull this off in 2015, but a lot, a lot has to go into it with, as you say, the main thing is, will we get the expected tax money? That's, that's the big, big question mark and hopefully we will.
You see every day in the paper where you see the tax sale, you see people that are having repossessions, sheriff's sales. Every time you see that, I'm sure somebody else eventually gets that property, but there's a lull in that three to five years that nobody's paying tax on that property, so we don't get that money. That's part of the assessed value for Fayette County. It's, it's a roulette wheel to try to guess what you're going to get. This is our best estimates. I guess one of the questions I'll answer before you even ask, as you know, I froze overtime and I froze the clothing allowances for 2014 because I knew that would help balance the budget. We would have enough money to make it through the year if we kept it that way. That's yet to be seen, whether we could do it or whether we can't do it, but we'll know in December. I asked Julie to put some overtime into the budget, which she did because we got FLSA, we've got contractual, we have holidays off and we have to have overtime, we have birthdays and some departments where they get that, they're higher dates, some people are contractual. We're not messing with those parts. We're just freezing overtime and the clothing allowance. We left it in there because we didn't want to violate the contract. If we can pay it, we will and if we can't, we won't. That remains to be seen, but it is in the budget. The second question you'll ask me, are there any raises in the budget? No. There is no increase in salary for anybody other than longevity for everybody. There's only two budgets that went up. One is my budget, the mayor's budget, and the only reason it went up is because I got two people, our longevity and our insurance went up. It went up nine hundred dollars.
You were told we got nine hundred.
Nine hundred dollars. And the cable TV went up, went up same reason. That's the only two that went up and they went up very little. No other budget was increased, every other budget was taken down. How are they able to save this money? Well, we're down about three or four people at the street department. We're down in the fire department, we're down in the police department, we're down everywhere and we've been using part-time people in most departments. We have had no, no additional appropriations, except one this year that was tax related.
In the general fund.
In the general fund. And that was for the ambulance. We have whittled it out, but we think we know how to pay for the new ambulance or at least the new chassis. As you all know, we whittled that out and we think we can do that without an additional appropriation. We're not sure.
No, we'll, no, we'll still have to appropriate the money.
Well, but we got the money from another force.
Yes. The money has to be appropriated. It doesn't come from taxes, but it has to be appropriated before we can spend it.
Everybody understand that? Fran?
Sir?
Would you mind reading these department costs?
H1?
Mayor, clerk treasurer, legal, city hall. That way, that way the folks at home can understand, they can put numbers by department.
Good idea, sure. Is that all right there?
That's fine.
Okay, 2015 budget estimates for the mayor, one-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-one-hundred-four dollars. For clerk treasurer, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-fifty. Legal department, eighty-five-thousand-twenty-four dollars. City hall, two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-four-hundred. Council, six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. First aid, one-million-one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. Police department, two-million-seven-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. Fire department, two-million-six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Department of transportation, six-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-eighty-five dollars. Landfill, five-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. Those departments are all from the general fund, which amounts to nine-million-sixty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. The other departments that we have are funded through other means, park, eight-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars. Cable TV, one-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. Airport, one-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Cemetery, six-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. CCIF, twenty-thousand dollars. Fire pension, one-million-twenty-two-thousand-eleven dollars. Police pension, five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. Continuing education, nine thousand. Local road and street, one-hundred thousand. Motor vehicle highway, one-million-one-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten dollars. Again, the total is thirteen million, one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. Mayor, Julie, are we expecting any reductions in personnel through attrition or retirements next year?
Yes. In my office, one of the longtime employees is retiring in August of next year.
Okay.
And it's not our intention to replace her. I think we have one fireman that's going to retire next year, about the same time in it, August or around it. I think, well, and the police chief officially retires as a policeman, but I think he'll be staying on.
Yeah, we're. Yeah, we retire, leave in June, and I'll keep him on until I leave, but we won't be paying pension on, on him anymore. We won't be paying anymore for.
Well, I appreciate when we do lose employees, that the other employees pick up the slack and work a little bit extra hard, and that's what we, that's what we need, the cooperation of all the employees to, to make this work.
Of course, we are losing an EMS employee the first of October.
Yes, yes.
Of this year.
That's, he's already retired, he's on vacation.
Mr. Mayor, the, the reason I asked Fran to read this, to give everyone an opportunity to hear what each department costs, uh, personally, I think this administration has done an outstanding job keeping us in the black. I had talked to Mayor and Julie one day last week, and there was an article in the Palladium item. Richmond's getting, Richmond, Indiana was getting ready to present their budget. Unball was told them, there's no way that budget would pass. They, I don't think have made the cuts as we have made. Muncie, Indiana, same situation. I would like to commend the mayor and board of public works and clerk treasurer. These cuts are sharp, I understand that, but I think for, I don't think, I know, for our community to survive, this is necessary. Thank you.
Well, Julie put a lot of hard work on this thing, and, uh, she brought it to the finance committee, and we approved it because she knows what she's doing, and, uh, I think she checked the appropriations report for the year to see where we're standing in two thousand and fourteen, how much money they have left in their current budget, and that helped her determine what we might need in two thousand and fifteen. Is that right, Julie?
That's exactly right.
Mayor, do you want more discussion, or you want a motion on?
I want everybody to feel free, and we have to open a public hearing. But I want, I want you to feel free to ask any questions. This is a very important part of this city, when you're, when you're passing a budget that we're gonna work on next year. And I will say that this budget reflects, with the exception of the two things I told you, honoring all the things and all the contracts that we have, with the exception of clothing allowance and overtime. It honors everything, and it, it has some of that in there, but it's, that's the only two things that basically we've made small in there, and the clothing allowance is funded full.
The clothing allowance is in there.
If we have the money, we're gonna pay it.
Yes.
It's just the overtime we've cut, we didn't take it out, we just cut it.
The budget I got when I first became mayor in January of two thousand and eight was seven million, seven hundred and thirty thousand. We're now down to.
No, it's thirteen million, seventeen.
Thirteen million, seven hundred and thirty thousand. We're now down to thirteen million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, and we have got nobody's service that I know of. And we've had to tighten adults, and we've had to operate in a different manner, but we're still offering the services. And last week on Patriot Day, I had an opportunity to speak on behalf of our fire and police, EMS, and I told the crowd at the church that night that we're one of the few communities in the whole state of Indiana, and I can almost guarantee you, if you have a heart attack, a fire, or you need a policeman because your house is being broken into, someone will be at your house on all three of those departments within three to four minutes. We've checked our times, we know where our times are, and we know what we're doing. I've been talking to Dale Munson, we've been, and I'm gonna bring that to you, and you're just a few minutes, we get through this budget stuff. In Union County, they've struggled with ambulance service, they've struggled with EMS, they just were dealt the blow that, uh, the people that were providing their ambulances gone. Sinclair's are taking it over, they don't have medics. They're gonna ask us to sign a contract that will help them. Uh, I, I, we help the county, the sheriff's department has one deputy at night, our police department help on a regular basis. It was brought to my attention, uh, we have volunteer fire department at Everton, which is a wonderful fire department, but it's not the day when you have Jimmy Lake in the grocery store, and you had Bob Leapy across the street, and you had people that jumped in the fire truck and took off. It's the day when ever, almost everybody in Everton works someplace else during the day, and you don't have those volunteers. Someone asked me, he said, well, Heritage House is in the county. It's, it's not in the city. I said, I can bet you that first fire truck to be at the Heritage House would be Conifer Fire, because it's called mutual aid, but they depend on us. And that's what Sinclair's are asking us now, uh, in just a few minutes here, they're gonna ask us, will you provide mutual aid for us in Union County? We provide mutual aid in Franklin County. So, we are good neighbors, and we're doing good things. I've, I've talked enough, uh, I want everybody to understand that we, we've not got services, that's important to. We're gonna open a public hearing, and you folks out there, who would like to speak first? Anybody out there? Kirby? Rex? Rest of you, almost all city employees. Anybody out there? None appearing, let the record show that I closed the public hearing. And if your minds are all clear, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Mayor? I have the motion, we pass pending ordinance three-one-four-six.
I'll second.
We got a motion in a second that we pass pending ordinance thirty-one forty-six, approval of the two thousand and fifteen budget. As you know, we can only pass it on first reading, it has to lay over for two weeks before we can consider it again, but this is an important issue tonight. Any further discussion? All minds are at ease, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Chomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
We now pass that five to zero, so the motion passes. Pending ordinance thirty-one forty-six will lay over until the next meeting, which is on, I can't see that board what is.
It's October sixth.
October sixth. Can you see that from here?
No. I don't try to see it.
I can't see that.
Pending ordinance thirty-one thirty-four is a salary ordinance. I would like to take all the salary ordinances you guys have these, except the last two.
Thank you.
Which Mr. Creach would like for us to hold, because he doesn't wanna be a part of, uh, the transfer station, which would be O. and P. But I'd like to pass all the rest of the salary ordinances at one time, unless, do you have a problem with it?
No, I'm on, sir.
No. Again, to repeat it, the longevity is the only increase, and we're not sure of what insurance may go up to hopefully, or.
Yeah, we don't have a, a hard figure on that yet.
Okay.
They asked us to budget, they recommended we budget eight percent increase.
I saw that in your report.
And the past few, the third, fourth year, we budgeted what they recommended, and our figures have come in much less.
Our claims are down somewhat?
Yeah, I was looking at that today, they've kinda inch back up at the last.
Oh, really? That's not good.
No.
We don't have to have a public hearing on the salary ordinances, we do need to pass them. Any discussion for about in the audience? Anybody? Okay, how about up here, questions, discussion? The all-fifth budget? No sal, no increase, other than longevity?
Actually, there are basically no changes in, from last year to this year.
If there's no discussion, I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion pass.
Yeah, you need to make it, it's a tardy, thirty-one thirty-four.
Three, oh, I think I'll, oh, please, two. What did I decide to do? I'll make the motion to pass thirty-one thirty-four, thirty-one thirty-five, thirty-one thirty-six, thirty-one thirty-seven, thirty-one thirty-eight, thirty-one thirty-nine, thirty-one forty, thirty-one forty-one, thirty-one forty-two, thirty-one forty-three, and. Yeah, that's what's in, that's it.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
Gabby, second, so motion. Discussion, anybody have any discussion? Well, roll call vote.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Chomel?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, thank you so much. We have two more ordinances, we'll make it, now, we can go ahead and suspend rules and pass those on third and final if we want to. I have, I have a little mixed devotion about passing the ordinances before we pass the budget, but we can do it, or we can lay over, whichever you want to.
I'd like to see it held over.
Second.
Is there a problem with that? Does that make it work harder?
We're not gonna pass them all tonight anyway, because we have two, right?
No, we could pass them on third reading, but really, they have to match the, the budget, and I would just, unlike Fran, I would like to see it held over and pass them after we pass the budget.
I'd like to do it all same.
Okay, that's cool.
So Fran doesn't wanna do that, so we're, we're gonna put that up for October sixth. It, it causes no problem, does it?
They only have to be done by November first.
Right.
Okay, so we now have two pending ordinances, thirty-one forty-four, salary ordinance for transfer station, pending ordinance thirty-one forty-five, a salary ordinance for transfer station. Those two have not been taken, with the rest of them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm moving to accept pending ordinance thirty-one forty-four, thirty-one forty-five.
There's a second, we got a second over here. Got a motion that we pass, uh, first reading, pending ordinance thirty-one forty-four and thirty-one forty-five. Any discussion? Okay, so, roll call vote.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Present.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Chomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
We pass that, four votes, a forum, and, uh, would you like to move forward on the third and final reading on that?
Uh, we'll, we'll save those till the other ones.
You're saying no?
Yes. Pass them all over.
Pending ordinance thirty-one forty-seven, this is deletion of a parking, two-hour parking sign in front of I-14 West 21st. Police department have found out that that was there, and they don't even know why it was there, they'd like to do away with it. Board of Works passed it today and moved it on to you for a traffic change.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm moving to accept pending ordinance thirty-one forty-seven.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
To move.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty-one forty-seven on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We may move forward.
Some moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second that we consider pending ordinance thirty-one forty-seven on third and final reading. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Pending ordinance thirty-one forty-eight, uh, this is a transfer of five hundred dollars from safety and medical to other contractual. And I don't know why it is, I should know, but I can't think. Do you know? Other contractual. But anyway, that's what we've been doing, and as we get to the end of here, we have to do a lot of this, it's transferred within the budget. What's your pleasure?
I'll move to pass pending ordinance thirty-one forty-eight on first reading.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, we consider pending ordinance thirty-one forty-eight on first reading. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider on third and final?
Some moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second that we suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty-one forty-eight on third and final reading. Any discussion on suspension rules? On suspension rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We can move forward.
Some moved.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second that we consider pending ordinance thirty-one forty-eight on third and final reading. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. I have a department reports, uh, G. Moore is not here tonight. Utilities.
No, I haven't, thanks, my God, one's enough.
Cut, report. Month of August. Trying to make this quick. But attached is our, first sheet attached is our fund balances, first column, of revenue and our expenditures for month of August. Page two is our overtime. About eighteen thousand, that is, putting in meters, that should drop this month, because we're not spending overtime this month putting in meters.
We're done?
We're waiting on another shipment. Work orders we had, we had pretty many, huh? About a hundred and seven line locates, fifty more work orders, thirty-five with water, sixteen with the sewer. We installed seven hundred and thirty-eight meters in the month of August. We get installed a chain link fence around the supplies at the service building, which is including the claims, also the carpet, tile, uh, the painting, it's all been done on the Vine Street office, which is really nice. Also bought some new rugs, go on with that. The only other thing I have is the MS four, is there any questions on the budget? Paperwork?
This is a new form that we're gonna present to you every, uh, at least once a month. It tells you what's going on over there, it shows you the money and the overtime. I think it's a better report than the other report, if it's okay with you.
Absolutely.
It's easy to read.
Sure.
And you know now what the utilities are doing, you can ask questions if you have questions about something. Go ahead with your.
The only other thing I have is the MS four program, municipal storm service system. I'm the operator of that, for this program. It's part of my duties to maintain our storm order permit from the state, but, um, I need to make all the city officials, board of works, uh, city council aware of this program. So that's why I'm here tonight, make you aware of the program. Mayor Framford today already, and Julie, sorry about that. But the program is, we're helped by Wesler's Engineering, they help coordinate the program for us. Basically, it's a tool to help protect our waterways from including our storm water. Through education, flyers, uh, visit back factories and businesses. We meet with the department heads, um, with Weslers, go over things that they should be doing or should not be doing. But what this is, this will make you aware that we are doing a program like that to the city, and there's a, a sheet that I need you guys to sign. Other than that, that's all I have.
This program's mandated by I.D.?
Yeah, it's mandated. Any questions?
Uh, if it's all right with the council, I'll just ask the utilities to report once a month, unless you want them to come twice a month.
No, it's a great report.
Yeah, I think it is too.
Yeah.
And they can work it out where they both wanna come, or they wanna take turns covering, it's fine. If there's something else you see you want on the report, or you let me know, and I'll mill it, but I, I always want them to make a simpler report, and one that told more than, I think they did a great job. Dave, all right with you? Transfer station.
You have a report in front of you, and also the Colts play at eight-thirty, I just want everybody to know.
You don't behave real good on your.
I'm just curious.
I know it's, I know it's recycling itself, but forty-five tons, which is a two or three ton increase.
It's just gonna stay between that forty-one and forty-five.
Okay, so, I, I appreciate people that are recycling, and.
I, I know Fran.
And if they aren't, I hope they will become a recycler, if that's a word, I'm not sure.
Really? So we're charging for the bags, I hasn't heard a thing?
No, you're, you're talking seven cents a bag.
I know.
And. Those, those that want to recycle, recycle.
Fire department. Fire department.
We had eighty-six runs last month. Like we had a hundred and sixty-four hours on ordinances, twenty-two inspections, nine investigations, twelve pre-planned trips, hundred and fifty-nine hours training. Total overtime with the FLSA and everything was a thousand forty-four dollars. We're real busy this month. We started flushing hydrants today, start testing hose. I don't know if any of yous have been by the Station One. We've got the Downing Simulator Truck over there, which will be having the police stations, and sheriffs will be over there doing their driving simulators too. That's the trailer just over there in the lot. Have that going on, then we'll be doing our fire prevention at the schools next month, so it's pretty busy. We're doing our physicals right now, just got a lot of stuff going on.
Any questions?
Okay, cost of operating you guys last month, two-hundred fourteen thousand four hundred forty-six dollars ninety-six cents. And it's up because of three pays, right, Julie?
Yes.
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you.
I wanna give the EMS report tonight. Dale is at an EMS meeting. I think he's meeting with two counties tonight about EMS things, training basically. Overtime is zero, as you can see, for August. If you read the front of the reports, you can see what it's split between the county and the city. You see the mileage on the units. And as you know, we have the new ambulance chassis order, and I talked to Dale Place today. I think they're gonna pick it, pick up the ambulance on the fourth or sixth, either the fourth or sixth of October.
Well, the fourth is the Saturday.
Must be sixth. And they'll be taking it up to take the box. They've been down, measured the box, measured everything. They're making the brackets that hold it on there. They're getting everything ready, so when they get it up there, it can be switched. They're gonna furnish this unit in between. Any questions about EMS? Parks and Recreation.
Two minutes, Jesse.
Let me tell you a story. And I want Tom to sweat getting home for the cold skin. You'll make it. It's only, it's only ten-minute drive. I used to have a funeral director friend in Iron River, where I go a lot, and a young girl named Jenny. And every time Jenny come around, I'd give her a quarter or fifty cents, and later it got to be a dollar. She'd get on my knee, and she'd read to me. Her mama kept saying, "It's not polite to ask Mr. Irvin for money." So one day, she went down to the bank, and she asked the girl at the bank, she said, "Did I have fifty cents?" And when she got home, her mama scolded her. She said, "You should never ask anybody for money or anything. You should wait until they offer it to you." So the next time they went to the bank, Jenny said to the little lady, "Would you like to ask me if I'd like to have a sucker?"
What does this have to do with Parks?
I'm just irritating you. I'm just curious. This is my park superintendent's birthday, and she won't let me say anything. But I'm telling you, I just happened to mention it during the meeting.
You should sing to her.
No, you can't. You want me to get killed? She's a great gal. She really is. And I gotta acknowledge it, I'm sorry. All right, give us your report.
All right. Uh, revenue for this month was twenty-nine thousand four hundred nine dollars and sixty-eight cents, which brings up your date, uh, just over a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Monthly expenses were ninety-two thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. That'll go down this next month, just because the pool's closing and everything. We're actually working on getting all the water out of the pool right now, which takes a very long time, because it comes out of a hole about as big as a hose. And then we also, the youth soccer is now going on out at the Soccer Felix. We have two-hundred-and-ninety-three kids that signed up this year, which is as many as we had last spring, which is the most ever, so that's pretty wonderful. We also have our dodgeball league starting this Wednesday. We actually have seven teams sign up, and this is the first time we've ever done it, so.
Do you do that over here at the baseball field?
No, we're doing it in the gym.
In the gym?
Uh, let's see. Oh, we also have the Halloween party coming up. We do got a flyer on the back here. We're there. It's on Tuesday, October 28th.
See, you violated my trust. That's my birthday. You did that right there. You did that just for me, didn't you?
You can still go to the party.
Last year, we partnered with the Children's Bureau. They have a fall festival every year that they did at the Expo Hall, and they switched last year.
Is this your first Halloween party? Have you ever done Halloween parties before?
No.
Oh, good, that's...
It should be fun.
Yes, that's interesting.
We just got all the candy purchased and some goodies purchased, and we're starting to get in here for it.
Any questions? Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Watch it, watch it, you're getting in trouble. Police, Dennis is sick, David's in Alaska. Any questions on the police department?
Yes. I was wondering about the telephone jump from thirteen-hundred last month to thirty-three-hundred this month, uh, past month.
I'm gonna say that, for some reason, we must not have had the whole bill for July, because you can see it has run pretty consistently.
Right.
Around two thousand dollars.
What about those contractual services, three thousand three hundred, what do you know what that was?
I honestly don't know.
Okay, that amount, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars fifty cents.
You notice, Fran, that, I'm thinking maybe type, Jackie might have had a typo here. The other contractual services and the telephone is the exact same amount?
That is interesting, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't think that's, I think there's a mistake there somewhere.
The only time was OPO. We'll be reimbursed for that. Okay, any questions? Ask Jackie or Dennis. David Joe is with his dad, but now he's in the hospital. I told him he didn't have to be here.
The amount for the street department, one hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and four cents. They had a little bit of overtime, but I think that's for the ice truck that worked on it.
Yes, that's all that is. John Fossey for cable TV.
You had me worried there a second ago. If I started singing "Happy Birthday," that's a copywritten song.
I'm not singing anything, because I never mentioned it.
It is though.
Yeah.
Future reference.
That actually went before the Supreme Court.
You have one date?
Who won?
I believe one of them was that. We did a couple of new shows. One, I would encourage everybody to watch. We're showing it right now, the CHS Fall Sports Preview, so we have good old coaches and players. It's airing weekday, six-thirty, and it's about twenty minutes long, but it's very good, worth watching. And we started a new program, interview program called On the Spot. And with that program, we feature community leaders, people who've made a positive impact on the community. Our first guest that we did was Holly Dunn, who's been here before. And then our next guest is gonna be coming over from Cincinnati, Betsy Ross. So the idea of the show is we kind of look into their background, how they came from the area, what made them successful. And people have any ideas for people who should be on that show, give us a call, and we'd be happy to take a look at that. We wanna try to continue that, and just kind of show a positive light on the community, let people know about background on people.
Tell them what we're doing on Conner'sville Speaks Thursday night. This'll be...
Something we've never done before.
That's right.
It's Conner'sville Speaks Halloween Show.
Should we keep it a secret?
No.
Do they know that there's really a witch coming?
It's a little early for Halloween, and...
Well, see, this will play through October, so no, it's good. We've got a couple of local haunted houses that'll be featured. They're gonna talk about what they're gonna be doing this year. Ekman Crazy Acres is gonna be there, maybe showing some of the work that she's done in the past. Plus, I don't know how she's gonna do it, but she's gonna at least talk about it. They're gonna be carving a four-hundred-pound hunkin'. I hope I didn't jinx that, because you have to roll those things to, you know, so that they are able to actually be usable, but they have one. And it's gonna be professionally carved, so that...
Upstairs?
No, we're not getting that upstairs. Out at their place, but they're gonna actually show some of the stuff they're gonna do, and they've got a professional carver that's gonna do that. So they'll be talking about that, and a few other things too, hopefully some interesting surprises in there. So that'll be fun. That's this Thursday, beginning at seven. And of course, that's a live call-in show, so go for your call-in.
Any question for John?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I alluded to the situation with the EMS. We have a contract with Franklin County on mutual aid, and when we meet the ambulance with our paramedics, we charge them two-hundred bucks. This was established several years ago. I think I was on the council, so it's more than eight years ago. Those runs, when you have that type of run, the insurance company could pay up to eleven hundred dollars on that type of run, and all we charge is two-hundred bucks. We have to take our ambulance, we have to go down to the county line or beyond. We have to use our people to get any ambulance in to try to save the people that are coming in. Because Union County is not gonna have a medic, they're just gonna have EMTs to start with over there. They've asked us to sign the same kind of contract with them. I suggested to the Board of Works that we should do that, but we should charge at least three hundred dollars.
How much are...
Three hundred.
Three hundred.
We can't meet an ambulance with a hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar ambulance and two medics and do it justice when they have the ability to charge the insurance company up to eleven hundred dollars for that run. In other words, they'd make about eight hundred dollars. So I think, if it's okay with you, I'd like to ask John Baker to change these contracts. The one with Franklin County, we can change with sixty days' notice. The one with Union County, they want a new contract. We could start it right now. Or tell me, and we won't do it at all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, perhaps Fran and Gary can help me on this. I think prior to me coming on council, our good friends at Franklin County, were they not taking advantage of our good nature?
Somewhat. I was on the council, yeah, somewhat.
And we increased, we increased the fee.
Didn't we have an issue with payment, though, there, back then?
I don't, we're not having an issue.
No issue now.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm saying, if Union County were to cha, I'm making this up, were to charge a patient eight hundred dollars, take it three miles to county line, and we charged them three hundred? That don't make sense.
We're not gonna do it on a regular basis, just in an emergency to save somebody's life.
Just when they bring them to the hospital, is when we'll be picking them up.
A good penny of theirs they'll take to Reed Hospital, so it's just when they come to our hospital, and they ask for help. We have to have a contract, and we have to know how much we're to charge them, and the council has to set that amount.
In the tens of, three hundred dollars?
We've been charging two.
But when it's, that, I mean, with Union County, it's not gonna be very many, is it?
What happens is, we take our ambulance out to the county line or beyond. Sometimes we go beyond, depending on how critical it is. Our medic gets in their ambulance, and they come onto the hospital. Our man works on them, or our woman, whoever it happens to be, works on them, brings them in. But it takes our ambulance out of circulation for a time, it ties up two of our people.
That's, I don't mean to be a bad guy, but that's my point. Our pay, and your service, and...
It's not something they have used. We get probably more of them out of Aspen Acres than we do anyplace.
So is this, I know our guys run a lot. Will this tie them up substantially more?
No, no, it's not real often. Mayor Chief, do you know how many times it happens? You're probably aware of it.
It happens a lot, but we'll get on a heart attack every once in a while.
Car accident.
Car accident. And they'll jump in and administer a drug that basically EMT can't.
But most of these people go to Reed?
I would say, a lot of Union County will probably go to Reed.
Yeah, so we will be bothered by that. It's just that they come here.
The point they made was the hospital may be a little bit cheaper, and will be a secondary unit.
Because we are right now with Franklin County, right?
It's, if, I'd like for you to tell me what direction, so I can have Baker design a contract for you.
I think it should be more. I guess what I'm saying, I'm the mean guy, but if you come to my house, it will be a lot more money than three hundred dollars. And I live here in town, and I pay taxes here in town. I mean, I don't mean to be a bad guy. I understand about, it, I understand about helping. I truly do, and I'm glad the fire department goes to, like, if heritage, okay, and I'm all for that. And this was before the tax thing, but everybody knows why you build your million-dollar home, or in that case, a nursing home, fifty feet from the city limits. They don't wanna pay city taxes, but they want city service. I guess what I'm saying, and my rambling, is that there's an expense involved, and the people of Conner'sville, I feel, need to come first. I just think it needs to be higher. I'm not, I'm not that, not helping people.
For Franklin County also.
Anybody?
Yes, we have to even them up, I think, yes.
Pardon me?
I think we have to have them even. But Mayor, you said they could, what, get eleven hundred, up to eleven hundred, but that doesn't mean they're gonna get eleven hundred.
No, on a Medicare patient, they may not even get enough to pay us the three hundred.
Right, so they're not automatically getting eleven hundred dollars.
Depends on whether you're carrying a person with the insurance. Depends on, they might have Medicare plus a, another plan that helps pay ambulance. But sometimes it's Medicaid, and they won't collect maybe two hundred bucks or a hundred and fifty, so they'll go in the hole for calling the person.
What about a percentage?
Hmm?
Percentage?
Sometimes it's a small percentage on Medicaid. What do you think, here, firemen? What do you, what do you think?
I don't have a dog in this house. It's just a recommendation. That way, they don't lose, you don't lose.
We've been at two hundred since probably oh-six.
Two thousand seven, I thought.
Oh-seven, okay. And I think since we gotta make a new contract for Union County, we just as well, in sixty days, raise Franklin County at the same amount. I think three hundred bucks is fair. We just don't do it that often. Hospital does it cheaper, so we're second choice.
It's not like they're transferring the patient into our ambulance, and the ambulance is coming there. They're still making the run. We're just getting on board to help save a life. I would, with the mayor, I think three hundred is sufficient right now.
When we did this a long time ago, raised the fee, it was so low that it didn't make any sense, and we kind of did it to not make money. It was just a nice thing to do, mean guy.
Well, at one time, at one time, our unit ran into two hasp and acres, but now we don't do that anymore. They have to bring them to the line if they're gonna be transferred and bring them on to Fayette Regional, but at one time, we went into Laurel and, and brought the person all the way, but we're not doing that anymore.
I certainly don't want them to lose money when they bring them here. I mean, maybe not make any money, but not to lose it, and so I think three do, three hundred dollars is a fair price. I mean, we don't do it that often.
Right.
And it's just a mutual thing to do.
I'm going to ask Mr. Baker to do whichever you want, but I need some guidance here.
I'll make a motion for three hundred dollars.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Got a motion that we increase our mutual aid to three hundred dollars, both for Union and Franklin County, and that we sign a contract with them. Further discussion? Better have a roll call go. Need paper?
You remember who's up here?
I do.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Pass that five to zero. I'll ask Mr. Baker to go ahead and get, we have kind of a tentative contract here. You can follow from Franklin County. There's a couple of paragraphs a little different in Union County, because they don't have something. Dale, I'll have to talk to you about it, okay?
Right, I'll talk to him.
The other issue I have tonight, I asked you several months ago, March maybe, to give me somebody to help me negotiate the police contracts due the end of the year. And we all agreed, Gabe Nobby would help do that. Gabe told the police department that he would negotiate under certain conditions, and one of them was after his work is done, in, of an evening. He wasn't going, he can't come here during the day. Now, these things haven't worked out. We're three months and fifteen days away from the contract expiring. They sent this letter to me today. Due to the inability of city council members to be able to meet due to unforeseen events such as scheduling conflicts, the executive members of the internal order of Police Lodge Seventy-four would like to... Seventy-four would like to change the agenda and meet exclusively with you, the mayor, and the city of Connersville attorney, Mr. John Baker, beginning immediately. Our contract will end December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, at eleven fifty-nine p.m., and we would like to have it resolved well in advance of the date and time. Please notify the Terminal Order of Police soonest regarding this matter. How do you feel about it? Does there someone else wants to negotiate during the day, or is, you want John Baker and I to see what we can do? We don't have much to offer.
I mean, I hate to be like Tom Creach and the bad guy, but it's like, it's on their terms and no terms, right? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Nobby, you've discussed it with them?
Kind of.
I mean, that doesn't seem very.
Well, it's, yeah, I don't go either way. I mean, if you feel like.
No, Mr. Weber is asking you, is it their terms or no terms? Is that what they're saying?
I mean. That's probably more my terms than.
Well, no, I'm saying that there's no negotiation as far as, I mean, people have to work, and it's your hours are this, their hours are that. There's no meeting in between? It's, I mean, no, I agree with you a hundred percent. Some of us work, you know? I mean, they work too. I mean, don't get me wrong. But the time issue, I mean, surely you'll be sometimes during the day, sometimes during the evening. I mean.
Gary, I remember, it's been several years ago, I negotiated with the Council Fire Department, and we went to the firehouse, I think you were there, and of an evening. And, you know, some of the guys were on duty, and some of the guys were off. I think we need to support the mayor, either meaning, I mean, you know, we're going to have the final say, insofar as much as, as our negotiator, Mr. Baker and the mayor. I mean, I don't have any issue with that.
That's fine with me. I just, if Gabe was on there, and you wanted to do it, I think that.
I'm not heartbroken. Okay.
I thought you were.
Don't you get a clothing allowance for doing that?
No.
But it's up to you. I mean, I have no problem with these gentlemen doing it, if, if that's the only way it can be done, but I mean, I think that it should be, you know, it should be done when everybody's happy about it.
I'm fine with it.
You want me to just move ahead with it? Is that what you want?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'm not excited about it either. I don't have a problem.
No, I'm like Gabe, I think it would be a good idea if the mayor and Mr. Baker moved ahead, because we have the final say anyway, whether it's yea or nay, but you just work for the council.
See, this all started because the police insisted the council people were involved. We'd have had this done probably, but it was their idea to have council people involved, and that's why I've been trying to get you involved. Nobody wants to be involved at the time they want to do it.
Like I said, I can remember that with, I did police and fire, and since council is the one that, yea or nay, I understand that.
I've met over here at the restaurant till nine, ten o'clock at night. I've been doing this for ten years, when we were on the council. Mr. Baker, you want to do this with me?
Sure. More than half.
You charge by the hour, don't you?
Right. You didn't have to.
All right, that's what we're going to do. Any further business? Let's see, I better go through the, I got to get Tom out of here. I got to get him out of here. Old business, anything? Miscellaneous business, Tom?
Miscellaneous business, two things. I was glad to see Councilman Nobby's parents win last night. Second thing, October fourth, we're having a shred day at the Connersville Transfer Station. If you have any personal documents you want shredded between eight and eleven-thirty, come to the transfer station. Thank you.
I've been stopped on three different occasions with people complaining about the speed bumps up on Thirty-Fifth Street as you go around that corner. There are two of them right together. I drove up there, you can practically stop, and you still bump over those speed bumps. It's ridiculous.
I had somebody stop me also. Not on the speed bump, but about the speed bumps.
Are you telling me you want me to have the city to take one away?
I'd like to see them both go. I don't think it's fair that they put those speed bumps in the road.
The council mandated it.
Could you move?
I didn't. I didn't.
Those are.
Brandon.
I knew that we consider it again, because that's terrible up there. It's one person that wants speed bumps on that corner. People slow down anyway.
Well, he is right there on the corner, though, you got to think that. But in some way, they are fixing it. It is rougher than a cop.
Somebody hits that with a motorcycle or a bicycle or something, somebody's going to get hurt.
I was mandated by the council to do it.
Well, could you remove one and move?
I can do anything you tell me to do.
Can you put one on Grand Avenue and slow him down there? I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, you make the traffic, I don't.
You live up there, that corner, you're safe with the dog.
I know, I go over there every morning.
Well, but the suggestion I had from a person was to remove both of those and put it in, in front of where the person who wanted it, the gentleman?
It is.
Put it in front, is it right in front of his house?
Right in front of his house.
Okay, well, that's what he said, okay. Well, then, but that one's been pushed down, correct?
There are two of them right together.
But there, someone, we added another one, didn't we?
They built it up first, and he wasn't happy. They went up and tore them both, they tore it out, and then put one new one. He still wasn't happy, and they went back and put a second one. Is that correct, Mayor?
That's correct. That's correct. But the whole thing stemmed because the council mandated that we put it in.
Cool. I'm very visiting.
No, no, the first one. You can mandate I take the second one out, if that's what you want to do. You just need to tell me what to do. I can't make those rules. It's a traffic thing, and it has to be made by the council.
Well, it's a mess the way it is right now, because I practically stopped, and you still could still.
It has to be an ordinance right now, because.
We don't have a rule that's on those. Those, we don't have a rule that's on those, speed bumps.
It should be for insurance purposes. Only the council can set traffic rules. That's a traffic rule.
Well, at one time, Dave went up there and sat there and watched the Kenny, just to get the ball rolling, can he, well, he's in Alaska now, but can he, or somebody do that again and see if the two bumps are really an issue, which we've been told they are.
I drove over it.
Okay, and I mean, that way, at least you're doing it the proper, using the proper tactics to do it, and then come back and say, hey, remove one of them.
Just tell me what you want done.
That's what I want done. I'm going to make that a motion.
We did.
If he's got a motion, he wants us to do a traffic survey.
It's bigger than what it is now.
He wants us to do a traffic survey. Is there a second to that?
Second, yeah.
Who's second?
I did.
You did. Okay. We'll do a traffic study, and we'll bring it back to you on the, whatever that is that I can't say.
Sixth.
Sixth of October. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Anywhere up to you, Gabe, on missing news?
No, I have a lot to say, except for congratulations, the boys' football team. They're doing a really good job this year, and this year, this week, they've got an opportunity to get the award forty-four trophy, as well as the water cake for the first time ever, so, no surprise.
I've got a young male on there, Christopher Deuce. He calls me Pop, because he lives with my son, and has for ten years with my son. He's done very well. He plays for the defense and offense. He's done great.
He's done really well. Proud of him.
I think that's the best football team has done in ten years, probably.
Well, whatever that is.
Fran, what do you have tonight for the good of the order here?
I'm just happy to be here.
If we don't get Tom up there, I don't see anything.
No, I have nothing.
You have nothing, Mr. Baker, I'm not even. Public Forum. Did you bring anything to us tonight, Tom? Did you bring anything to us?
I was Debbie, I think two bumps is too much up there, but they need something, one more. Because I went across, I thought, oh, my God.
And you can almost stop, and it's still awful, isn't it?
They couldn't drive it so fast.
I will ask police to do a traffic study tomorrow, and we'll get a traffic study by the sixth.
I think they need something up there.
Okay, so I.
How much you get?
Because I think we live around, I think we need to stay.
Anything else from Public Forum tonight? Thank you all for being here. I'm ready to adjourn. You have anything, Colonel Trezor? You've got your.
No.
My answer for here.
She don't have anything.
Huh?
She didn't have anything.
No, she's done.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, Mayor.
Any meaning adjourn?
Tom, you got?